Okay. Good evening. Today is January 12th, 2017. We're at Ralph Smith. May I have a motion at this time to enter executive session to discuss matters pertaining to specific personnel and contract negotiations, please?
So moved.
I got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We're now in executive session. We do have one agenda modification for tonight's meeting. The Ralph Smith principal was physically unable to be here tonight, so that presentation will not be given. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as a modified, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? I guess we hope mostly gets well soon, so. At this point, we need to appoint an interim district clerk. May I have a motion appointing Rebecca Lloyd as the district clerk for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Other than thank you very much for doing this. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to Pride. James, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, sure. So, since we last met, our basketball teams have been doing pretty well. The girls have had a season of like five wins and three losses, and the guys have been doing pretty great as well. Our swim team has been doing pretty good. They have five wins and four losses so far. I'd say that's pretty good considering they only have eight kids on the team. And we had a group of orchestra students play at a Chamber of Commerce breakfast. It was pretty great to have an invitation for them to play.
Did a great job, too.
Yeah. Thank you. And we were there along with other, three other high schools in our area. Poughkeepsie High School, Ketchum, and Arlington High School. Also, we had like about 50 students go to a training program called The Sources of Strength. This program is like a prevention from suicide, bullying, violence, and substance abuse. And the program trained the students to become like stronger leaders amongst their peers and to eventually become caring adults. And so it appears to be a pretty good program, and some of my peers I've spoken to who attended the event said that they enjoyed it and they learned quite a bit there. And also, I and a couple of other students have met with our interim athletic director, Ms. Romano, and he seems to have a good amount of progress on the proposal for exemption.
Okay. You know, this is a demonstration of why having a student on the board is so important because how many times did you hear any of that three years ago? Not. You didn't. So, thank you, James. That's very nice. Can I just talk about, since we're at Ralph Smith, the concert was last night. It was, it was a good concert. It was up to high school. I was there. And I especially liked the string section. I thought it was very creative and really nice, although it all was good. I just particularly liked the strings. And I would like to suggest that we maybe work out some way that concerts could be at the school that they, if it's possible. I think the crowd would be perhaps larger, also more respective of things because it's in their school. So, just a suggestion. You know, I know Violet Avenue is the only one that has it in their school, only elementary that has it in their own school. And I think, I think there's some value to having the concerts there if they can be arranged. That's just my opinion. So. Got any pride?
Yeah, and we'll definitely look into that, especially in this school. They have their own separate auditorium.
Right. It's small, though. Very.
Yeah, that's true. I did want to read one letter that was sent to the Board of Education and myself. We had an unusual last-minute request, and it's complicated when we get requests for an overnight trip to, first, that involves students and staff. There's a lot of Ts that need to be crossed and Is dotted and, but we, we got a legitimate request and heartfelt plea from the theater students to attend the New York State Theater Educator Association Conference. And I received a letter from Margaret Hassett, who's our theater director and employee, and, but I want to read you Kirsten Horn's letter of thanks to the Board of Education for making it happen. And I would like to thank you also for, for making this happen. It says, "Hello. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the NSTEA Student Conference with FDR's International Thespian Society. I wanted to reach out and extend my thanks to the Board and all who made this trip possible. Theater and the arts are frequently pushed to the side and cut by schools in this day and age. The commitment of the Hyde Park School District to keep the arts in our schools and support them with trips like this is incredibly beneficial and appreciated. I, an avid performer, have attended countless workshops and master classes over the years, but absolutely none compare to the experiences I had this weekend. FDR students were able to interact with theater professionals and represented our school with a level of great maturity and skill. The abilities that were honed at this conference will directly benefit FDR through our students' work in the upcoming music, musical, and all future theater efforts to follow. Furthermore, those planning to pursue theater as a profession, the connections and contacts made along the way with the skill set learned at this conference will be an advantage for these students for years to come. Reflecting on my weekend and my years in the FDR Theater Department, I am thankful and proud to be part of the Hyde Park School District and so appreciative of this wonderful opportunity." Extremely appreciative, very well-written letter from a student, so, thank you.
I'd like to echo it. I heard from quite a few of the students personally, and they all were raving about it. The students that took the tech workshops and things are already really looking forward to being, you know, how to implement it into the school musical and the concerts coming forward for light and sound, and also the stage management and things like that. The performers also had a great time. They learned a lot. They were very appreciative. They said it was so unbelievably organized and presented to them. We had students that performed at some of their showcases. We had another student who was their technical director for their showcase. We, it was, it was really unbelievable for these students. They, they came home almost starstruck with it. They were really excited. So, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, and I'd heard that, you know, just, they were just incredibly impressed with the, just the depth, the people that were there and the experience that was there and what they were able to glean from it was huge, like, like no other, you know, like the concentration of what was available at this one event, you know, just exceeded anything that they'd been to in the past. Yeah.
So, they're looking forward to it next year?
Yeah, and now they have the whole year lead time to, you know.
Fair.
Yeah.
This was, it was upstate somewhere, right? Was it, I was thinking like Utica or something?
No, it wasn't. It was two hours away, and I will not remember where it was. I, I could look it up. I don't, I just don't remember where it was. It was about two hours away.
But it wasn't New York. It wasn't toward the city, was it? Wasn't it?
No, it was, it was west. It was west of us.
Two hours. That's pretty close to Utica. Two hours.
Is that Utica? Really?
I thought, yeah.
I thought Utica was farther.
Two hours, two hours from here.
Oh, okay. Well, doesn't matter.
That'll get you to Utica.
Oh, I thought it was perfect.
Could get you a lot of other places, too, but. You got any other, anybody other, any other pride? I know we kind of just got back from having time off, so move on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, we, this is not quite under superintendent report, but I don't know where else to do it. The Dutchess County School Board Association wants the board to complete a survey, and I just want to ask the board, if they want, you can pretty much, they want one person to enter it, so I think that's why they sent it to me, but somehow we need to collectively come up with answers. So I emailed it to you separately. We could do it here, or you could each send in your answers, and we'll kind of collate it and take the highest average. I don't know how else to do it and get it done before our next board meeting. They didn't have much recommendations.
Six questions, but there's A, B, C, D, E's on each one, so it could take a while.
Yeah, I don't think we should do it here.
I mean, it could add it to board discussion area, but I'd be happy to just send you a list of.
If people want to send, take, take, send me your responses, and then I'll put them together, and we'll, we'll figure out which A, B, C, D. If there's a real discrepancy, I'll ask for some clarification or, you know.
Yeah.
Right, so just to get straight.
I don't know how they expect the board to all agree and pick one answer. I've never seen anything like this.
They're asking for one answer on each topic?
No, no, no. There's, it's not one answer for each one. If you read this, it says, each one of those topics underneath this, each is a subtopic, and each one is.
You rate somewhat important.
You rate each one. That's why it would take a while to do.
So prioritize the ones under it or add something of your own.
I mean, the only problem I have with that is some of the questions are, in my opinion, ambiguous and, and open to interpretation, but, but that's, that's normal. That's what a survey is.
They're attempting to create a platform, is what they're, they're sort of trying to get some in.
Right. The other way to go is if three board members wanted to get together to represent the rest.
Why don't we just send it in?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think circular, you know, if, I mean, we've all gotten it as an email. I think if we just, just identify.
Add to the email, send it back.
Just say, okay, which, which ones are the, are the most important to us? Because quite frankly, if it doesn't get a most important, it's not going to get, it's not going to make it to the platform.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think we, if we each do it independently, and then we'll send it in, and then you can collate it and make some assumptions based on what's there.
Today is the 12th, so can we, can we have it send to the district office by, well, give us some leeway, Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, and.
Monday's a holiday.
Yeah, Monday's a holiday.
You're retired, but it's still a holiday.
So, send, send the responses to Lucille.
Lucille, okay.
To Lucille. I'll give her the heads up to, you know.
And what I, what I'm planning to do is take the email that I got from, add my responses and then forward it to Lucille.
Okay, perfect.
Did that work? Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
As long as we're off-topic, this is, let's see, not president's report, but president's rant, I think. I recently found out that the town board, who had promised to reevaluate the town of Hyde Park Housing, is not going to do that. Mr. Minimer and I went to the board, their board meeting in the late summer, I guess early fall, where they indicated, and they made a big deal about it being, the evaluation reval was going to happen in 2017, and I've just learned that they don't have the money. They never had the money. They're looking for grants, they're looking for this, and I don't see this happening at all. I mean, I, it's almost, for me, it's like, okay, everybody's complaining, we'll say we're going to do it, and then we'll go away and very quietly not do it. And I, this means a lot to the school district. We get a lot of problems when the rates change and it's after we've set the budget, and it would be very beneficial to us for them to keep their word. So that's my rant. I'm sorry. All right. Anybody else want to rant?
I completely agree with you.
I'll, I'll say what Doug said, but I'd be screaming, so.
Okay. Just wanted to get that off my chest so that people out there know, at least three of us have said that the board is in favor of this, so. Okay. Let's move on to our first presentation, which, where's Elliot? Elliot can, okay.
Come on up.
This is a district renovation input plan, formerly known as a drip.
The plan, not the, not the person.
I have a lady with me, so I'm sure you're referring to me and not her. Good evening.
Hello. So, tonight Elliot and I are going to talk about the District Renovations and Improvement Plan, or DRIP. Last year, we used some fund balance to take care of some of the items in the plan.
Okay.
Elliot's going to review what we did in just a few moments. After that, we're going to talk about a few more things that we'd like to take care of this year. If the board is agreeable to it, we will, at a later board day, ask for an increase to the budget to take care of those things. That would come from fund balance again. I have a slide in the schedule that's later on, or in the presentation later on, that explains the fund balance and where the money would come from. Elliot.
Thanks. Just want to highlight a couple of things, you know, we were very beneficial last year to be able to do a lot of things, and we tried to pick projects that, that really did touch all the buildings in the district. North Park Cafeteria and Carpets, we did the flagpole here in Violet Avenue there. They were very old, very covered in lots of interesting things and had to be treated specially. Also, we did some historic windows at Havland. We did some classroom furniture at the secondary level. I mean, you can read all the details there. We added card reader access, which is great for Ralph Smith in this building, to improve the way that the students move through the building at, at arrival and departure times. Did some work at the bus garage, Netherwood. So, all of these things were handpicked as, as multiple small projects, but we wanted to try to do something, a little something everywhere. So now this year, Linda can explain a little bit more about the budgetary situation that we're in.
Okay, so this chart lists the fund balance that we have as of June 30th, 2016. It's the information that was in the audited financial report. If we have additional projects, we would take the money from the unassigned fund balance. We currently have a, an unassigned fund balance of 6.8 million. That is over the 4% threshold by 3.2 million. The main reason that we're over the threshold, as you may remember, the auditors had us change one of the reserves, and we took 2.9 out of a reserve and put it into the unassigned. So, does anybody have questions about this before we move on?
I, I just would like to be clear that this is tax money that we receive for our budget, right? That we are now proposing to spend on projects.
Yeah. This was tax money that we received for the 2015-16 budget.
Okay, just want to get it out there.
Right, yeah, and we had it left over because we, we couldn't keep it in the reserve according to our new auditors, so it went into unassigned. We do need to come up with a plan for unassigned fund balance, according to the New York State Controller. We didn't want to look for projects that would require that we put it in, back into the budget every year, so we like to look at one-time expenses.
Okay. So, this year, instead of doing a lot of little things, which can be a little tedious and time-consuming, we wanted to look at larger projects that would really have a district-wide impact. And so Linda and I met with Superintendent Dr. Rychik and, and looked at three projects that would really affect every building in the district. The first would be window shades. We often get complaints or concerns about the condition of the 50-something-year-old vertical blinds in some of our buildings. The newer ones are like 25 to 30 years old. It's, it's a sizable expense when it's added up district-wide, but certainly there is a need throughout the district. Parking lot lights, about a year ago, we were approached by Central Hudson, who was promoting a rebate program to participate in the co-funding of some lighting upgrades, including interior and exterior. For those of you that were on the board, 12 years ago, the district did do an energy performance contract to upgrade most of the interior lights throughout the district. However, parking lots and exteriors were not included in that project. So, a lot of the lighting that we have in and around our buildings are quite old. You can see that they're very orange. Typically, that's indicative of an older technology. As the town of Poughkeepsie and the city of Poughkeepsie have been upgrading their streetlights, you can see that those orange lights are now turning into very bright daylight-type LED lights throughout Route 9 here in the village of Hyde Park. They've done some of that work as well, so we would be looking at that style light. There is an energy payback on that. We would, our savings would be paid back in the next three to five years on a project like that, and there is a rebate option for them to co-fund some of that expense, roughly 20%. It averages out, building by building, it's a little bit different. And classroom furniture. Some of the furniture at Havland Middle School is older than I am. We, we did some replacements, another shocking.
You're a baby.
I know. Even still.
A mere slip of a ladder, as they would say.
Well, gosh, guys, I'm going to blush. But, you know, we do have furniture that, that is 30-plus years old throughout the district. Last year, we were able to purchase three classrooms with the furniture at Roosevelt High School, three classrooms with the furniture at Havland Middle School. Classroom furniture's not cheap, but we hope that the new stuff lasts even half as long as the stuff that we have has lasted, that we'd be in good shape. But you could see these three items altogether add up to roughly $850,000 of projected expense.
So, the next step for us is to actually finalize the project costs. Everything really is an estimate. Even when we ask the board to increase the budget, it'll be an, an estimate at that time. But one thing that we are going to do is go out to the bid for the window shades. We don't want to do that yet. If we, if, we don't want to take the time to do that if, if we know that we're not going, or if we're not sure if we're going to have the funds for it. And we are working with Central Hudson to determine if we have to bid for that, because they are the company that provides the utilities for us, but because of the cost, we're not sure if, if we can just use them without seeing what other vendors might offer in that price or for that project. We expect to send a resolution to the board at a future date of about $850,000. The resolution would be to increase the budget by that amount and to take it from the unassigned fund balance.
All right. What are your plans for the rest of it?
The rest of it? That's, the board can, at a later date, can choose to do several things with it. We could look for other reserves that we'd like to save money for. We could appropriate it to future years' budgets, to the tax levies in future years. Or we could find some more projects. Last year, we had the $2 million capital reserve. We may want to consider doing something like that again this year.
All right. Personally, I'd like to give some or all of it back in, towards the tax levy, myself.
Yeah. Are you giving any consideration to the parking lot situation at FDR? I mean, regarding the lights and that, that project that, that's right here, and also to just refixing that, that parking lot? We need lines in there. I mean, we just need it to be straightened out. It's, it's like a free-for-all.
Yes. There are some things we can do. We have a temporary stop sign, and we're putting in a permanent stop sign to increase traffic control. We're going to be restriping it over the summer. When it comes to projects like this, we, we have to be very careful to not cross the line into capital renovation that would require SED project review, the retention of an architect or an engineering firm. So, to fix a damaged part of a parking lot would be a repair. To replace a parking lot entirely is considered a capital improvement.
What about the lights?
Well, the lights are going to be part of the parking lots as well. That exterior lighting project is all exterior lights, not just on the building, but in every parking lot in the district, including the roadways in and out.
Thank you.
So, it would, it'll certainly help.
Great.
Now, that upgrade is done without having to take the, the existing light structures down and replace them? You're just going to, the head of the light structure made suitable for LED lighting?
Depending on the fixture. We have different fixtures throughout the district. Ideally, where they can replace a head, they'll replace the head. Where they can replace, or where they have to replace a pole, they would do so, but it is going to be an in-kind swap. So, we're not looking to run new lines, to add new lights to other places. We're really just doing a kind-for-kind replacement.
I just did a swap today, actually in my garage. I swapped out all the fluorescent lights I'd purchased five years ago for savings and replaced them with LEDs, and suddenly I found a whole bunch more crap that's in there. My wife's going to ask me to move, which may not have been a smart move on my part.
I do the same thing in my home. And actually, just as a point of information, we are, the district is currently purchasing LED tube replacement lights. So while you may not notice, as these lights go out, we are phasing in LED replacements inside the buildings as well, but they don't require a fixture upgrade.
Are they going whiter than what we've got?
Oh, we're trying to keep the colors even, but they don't fade as a fluorescent would as it ages. They, they tend to stay more consistent.
Are there other questions?
Any other? Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to an update on transgender best practices.
Thank you. So, a little while back, I gave a presentation on transgender, and there was a forum, and I was asked to just give an update on where we're at now, what have we done as a district, and what might we do in the future. There we go. So just as a quick review, the Dignity for All Students Act, where transgender protections really live in terms of the law and our policies, took effect July 1st, 2012. Since then, we have provided training with staff on opening day, since then, and then. What DASSA does is provides a safe and supportive environment, or, you know, mandates that we provide a safe and supportive environment, free from discrimination, harassment, intimidation, and bullying for all students. We are in full compliance, and the principals are the DASSA, building coordinators, assistant principals are backup, and I'm the Dignity Act coordinator for the district. So, if.
Beba, can I interrupt? The DASSA, is that a state act or a federal act?
State. So, in New York, it's called the Dignity for All Students Act. Many states have similar regulations and laws. And I'll, I'll just add as a little procedural that when a student feels bullied or harassed, or a parent feels their child has been bullied, harassed, they put that complaint into writing to the building principal. That's investigated. They need to get a response. And if the parent or the student is unhappy with that solution or, or resolution of the problem, then they can apply to me in writing, and then I investigate at my level. So, here's what's happening. And I went, at the time of writing this, gender-neutral bathrooms were in progress. I believe that now they are. There are two gender-neutral bathrooms, and what that looks like is there are two places in the high school that had two adult bathrooms that locked, one for men and one for women. One of them is remaining for staff, still locked, but for men or women to use. And the other one is a gender-neutral bathroom that students or, or any adult could use as well. That's not locked, but of course, when you go inside, it has a locked part to use the restroom, but we don't allow any of our student bathrooms to be locked, as you can imagine. Students are allowed to participate in the sport that's most comfortable for their gender identity. We have had training and staff meetings. I was actually at the one in Netherwood, and, and we've had several other schools get free training from Glisten, and we had Rob Codlin come here, but he also have colleagues who provide that training, and that's ongoing. There also are curtains now in the FDR Girls Locker Room, and that's because there were showers. So this was really not a cost kind of initiative. We're able to just provide privacy for anyone who needs it. Unfortunately, in the FDR Boys Locker Room, there just wasn't that opportunity to provide that privacy. So, this is, you know, the things that we're able to do without a major project. Teachers do allow students to change in the coaches' office, the hall bathroom, the nurses' office at both Havland and FDR if needed. These are just possibilities, and some of this, some of these things have been discussed by students at the high school with administration, and some are best practices that have been shared with us. So, one is the idea of one color for graduation gowns, with just an alphabetical lineup for graduation versus separate boy and girl. Gender-neutral bathrooms in all the buildings, and, and again, there's no other building that has sort of those extra adult bathrooms that could be easily turned over, so that this is a bigger, these would be bigger projects. Other steps to take would be looking at gender-specific language that's in dress codes and other policies. So, one example is, you know, tank tops for girls. I think you've heard that example before, where, you know, do, is it tank tops for anyone? Or the length of skirts for girls, if you just, you know, have it, have that be gender-neutral for all. Using students' chosen nicknames and pronouns, and we do do this. So this actually came up in our district this week, and the, the information, the guidance counselor put out there to the staff at the students' request was just so respectful. so respectful and caring, and people have just been really great about respecting students' gender identity. And to avoid segregating students by gender whenever possible. And going forward, we continue to learn about the subject. One of the, the things that was really great that this guidance, the guidance counselor put into the email was, you know, we're all human. We're gonna make mistakes. So, if a student wants to be, to use male pronouns, he, him, or his, and you make a mistake and say her, you just say, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. You know, it's really okay. We're all just learning together. The idea is to really take the cue from the student. And, you know, we'll continue to, to get more training and presentations. In fact, the group of teachers and staff that were working with this student said, can we have someone come in and talk to us? We just really wanna make sure that we get this right. And so, we're just continuing that work. So, that's all I have. This is just a quick update of where we are.
Aviva, can I go back to that statement about students allowed to participate in most, in sports most comfortable?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. What does, what do the leagues say? What do the leagues say?
I have no idea what the leagues say. I'm more concerned about the fact that for several years now, we've had a qualification exam testing given to athletes at Havlin who wanna play up. This is, this is boys playing boy sports or girls playing in girl's sports, who are tested and evaluated for the capabilities to participate in the physical differences that occur as they grow, as they grow through puberty and get to the high school. But it's only dealt with the, you know, the, the teams being made above the same sex. What happens here if you have a young man or a young woman looking to cross, cross-gender, transgender, going from a female to a male sport? And how do we protect their safety, particularly in some of the more physical sports?
Are we obligated to just say, go ahead and get killed? I don't wanna say it that way, but, you know.
I don't know if you wanna add, and then I, I'm sure I can get you more information and come back with that.
Yeah. The Athletic League has a comprehensive report on transgender and how to handle each of those issues. I know from Joe Phelan, from Superintendent Aronbeck, you know, has been spearheading that. So, we can provide for the board what the Section 9, and this goes all the way up to the State Athletic Association. They've been following this probably more closely and for a longer period of time than anyone else. So, if you'd like, we can provide you with the information from the Athletic Association, both New York State and regionally.
You know, I have, you know, specifically, I watch an awful lot of sports, and I try and get to see every one of the participating teams at least once or twice a year. And I would have great concerns watching the difference in physicality of some of the sports to, to, the domination could occur in a shift from male to a female sport, the same sport. Or the problems existing for girls moving into sports that they don't have on their side, or the transgender male moving into a, like football. You know, there, they're protected. But some of the other sports, lacrosse, I'd be very concerned about that. Soccer, I'd be very concerned about that.
Yeah, I'll get that for you.
That the, the physical contact that's permitted under the rules would expose these people in many cases to more significant injuries than are occurring now. I mean, I wouldn't even wanna guess, and not that, so I don't appear sexist, I wouldn't wanna even speculate how many more injuries would occur for unprepared males, male transgenders participating in the competitive cheerleading that we have. I mean, those girls, those teams do things that you can't prepare for unless you've been doing it for five years to suddenly walk, say, I wanna do that.
Well, I love that I work in a district where the concerns are, in this kind of situation is really for the safety of our students. So, I'll get that information for you for sure.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No other questions? Thanks.
See, I don't even have to talk about this.
At this point, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Anybody would like to address the board? Please step up. Hi, Bobby.
Happy New Year, Bobby.
Happy New Year, everyone. Bobby Goodman, Hyde Park resident. Just had a couple of things 'cause of the drip project, suggestions maybe. For the furniture, the libraries for both Havlin and FDR have furniture that were there, older than I am, which I'm older than he is. So, and those are used by every student as classrooms all year round. So, just as a, if we're looking at classroom furniture, the libraries are definitely, I'd like to advocate for them. Also, as being on the facilities steering forum, we have talked about the elevator at FDR for many, many years. So, if we're looking at trying to spend a little bit of money, maybe trying to get a price on the elevator at FDR.
Are you welcome?
Let's see. I had one more thing. Oh, the presentations that are up tonight, is there any way to get them online? Because they're not on the, like, on the agenda, so we couldn't look at them ahead of time. So, I didn't know if there's a way to get the.
Yeah, there are. That was probably my.
No, it's fine. I just, sometimes they aren't, but there's a lot of information in those.
But you can, you can go to the district site, Board of Education, and get on the, the Public Board docs.
Right. But the presentations weren't on there.
So, that's, actually, in my former district where I was a, where I was a clerk, I, we put them in a certain section and then moved them public after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, I will not do that again.
No. It's, I just, it's, it's a lot of information. So, being two different facilities and transgender is a lot of information. So, I just figured if we could get them up there, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you for, we see him because.
Right. That's why, yeah, yeah. And sometimes we do, but.
Actually, at the beginning of the, of the meeting, at the exec session, I wasn't seeing them there. They suddenly weren't there anymore, and suddenly reappeared. The presentation on the, what was the first one we had?
The budget.
The drip wasn't there and stuff. I don't know what happened, and it came back. Yeah, it was, I could get it from my log-on at home, but when I got here, it wasn't on it. And now I see some of them are back, so.
All right. Okay. So is it. Thank you.
Yes. He didn't re, he didn't.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else like to address the board? Wow. Two in one meeting.
Two in one meeting.
All right.
I'm Victoria Kane, and I'm a Hyde Park resident, a former Hyde Park school parent, meaning my kids have all graduated. And I'm a school nurse in the district. So, wearing those different hats, I'd like to address two things. One is, I'd like to second Bobby's comment about the elevator at FDR. As a nurse who had to use the elevator with kids in wheelchairs, that elevator is about as big as this podium and me. It doesn't really fit a large high school student in a wheelchair and another adult. It's very difficult. So, that would be a very worthwhile project. The other thing I'd like to address is Mr. Duffy's comments about sports and transgender students. And I'm sure that you all are reading the, the reports and the guidance from the state. But when students wanna test up from middle school to high school, they, they do exactly that. They have to take a test. And whether they were born with female characteristics or male characteristics, they have to pass that test. So, even somebody who's born as a male, if they wanna play football and they're not physically able in middle school, they won't, they won't pass. And so, if they were born as a female and they take that test, they're just as able, you know, and they pass the test, they're just as able or, or not able as somebody who was born male. And I think that, that goes largely the other way until students hit later in middle school and high school. But there have been studies that show that after a certain amount of time on hormone treatment for people who were born male, that those advantages go away. And I'm sure the state guidance shows that also. That's it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Anybody wanna comment?
I would just comment on the fact that playing lacrosse, a five-foot-two transgender female is at a great disadvantage when she runs into a six-foot-four, 230-pound male player, no matter what you test for. You test for skills and capabilities and agility. But I'm very concerned about some of the impact and how you justify, identify that, particularly when the sport doesn't provide for sufficient coverage in terms of protective gear. That, I think, would need to be really readjusted, and it's gonna be an issue.
Okay. We do have a second public participation.
Well, I, you know.
I would, I would like to hear the answer right now, if you wanna wave it for a second.
If it's okay with the rest of the board, that's fine.
It's okay. Yeah. Well, while she's coming up, I think that, I mean, and we can have a debate on this, but I think you gotta recognize that, I mean, there are five-foot-two boys in high school that would be in exactly the same situation. I mean, I, my son played lacrosse, and, I mean, he wasn't five-foot-two. But there were, there were guys on there. Boy, I'll tell you, they were, they were tough. And it's, I don't think that, it's not a male or female thing here. This is, it's.
Well, I disagree. I, so my sons were five-six and played basketball against six-foot-six guys and got banged up pretty good. But they were tough as nails, and they had spent multiple years working out in, in strength training.
Anyone who wants to go out for that sport has gotta be prepared that it's a tough sport, and it's gonna, and that's the way it's gonna be. And it doesn't matter whether you're transgender or whether you're.
You still have to make the team, right? I mean, just because you tried, you have to make the team.
Well, yeah. My concern is the way the rules and regulations are written. How, how much can they challenge the fact that you, you did not allow my child to play because of transgender issues and not because of skill levels? The skill's on the court. I can move. I can speed. I can run. I can handle a stick. I can do all those things.
Transgender shouldn't enter into whether or not that child is eligible to play. Transgender.
I'm not, I'm not, I think there has been a layer or a level of eligibility that's been added that is of great concern to me in terms of the safety of the children to take advantage of it.
Is it okay or not okay?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Speak.
So, I just, I was going to say basically what these two board members said, that, you know, it doesn't matter how, how you're born. If you're, if you're up to that, that level of play, if the coach decides you're up to that level of play, then you can play. I think, though, Mr. Duffy, you brought up a second point, which is the possibility that parents would say, you know, you're, you're letting my child, or you're not letting my child play because they're transgender. Or another parent saying, that child took a spot because, you know, your special, special privileges because they are transgender. But I think that making things gender-neutral and laying out a very clear set of guidelines avoids those issues. And so, I appreciate that the district is taking those steps.
All right. I guess the other items?
Yeah, the, I did, yeah, I did. I just wanted to ask Elliot, I believe, is the elevator a capital project? So, unfortunately, we can't do the elevator. The elevator has to wait for a capital project. The minute you're tearing out an elevator and putting in a new elevator, it's a capital project, not a, not a district renovation. It is on our building condition survey. The district leadership team, which also is the facilities team now, is definitely looking at the next future capital project. And we'll review the drip plan to see if people, we don't typically, well, never mind. We don't have furniture on our drip plan because it's not a renovation and improvement. But we will consult with the buildings as to where to spend the furniture money. We have been consulting with them on, on the other issues as well, the shades and lights. So, just, just to clarify, the elevator is a capital project, and we'll go back and look at the requests for furniture that have been coming in.
But I would add one thing is, keep in mind, and I believe I'm right, and I'm gonna look at the far end to make sure. If we take money, take that reserve money and decide to use it to fund capital reserve, it could, it could go in to there and then ultimately be voted, it would then be referendum in order to.
You could have a capital project that's fully funded.
Right. Fully funded. That's my point. So.
We did that once already.
Currently, we have a cash capital project of $1.1 million, and that was voted on, it was part of the general fund budget last year.
Right.
So, we could, that is a possibility. We could do that again for 17, 18.
Move that money into a capital reserve that then, at some point, would have a referendum vote that would be fully funded.
Or we could have the vote as part of the regular.
That's right. It wouldn't have to be a separate vote. It could be done. So, I mean, that's just one way of getting, I mean, if, if those are important things, that's the way that we can do that.
Yep. Just not with this configuration.
It's not, yeah. You gotta, you gotta go around to get there. But.
Good creative ways to get there.
Okay. Any more comments before we move on? Okay. Next item is board discussion. I'm unaware of any board discussion item. Does anybody have an item that they wanna speak about?
Just what a good job.
James, you have any, any more bombshells? Like, you know, let's do away with Jim, you know?
No. But I was thinking for like, kind of what Aviva brought up, the, like, one color for graduation. Like, I was thinking, maybe I could kind of have a poll to see if students would want to do that.
Sounds good.
And I could just bring back the results.
I think all the girls would vote for no yellow.
No yellow. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. As long as we don't switch it to all yellow.
So, let's make, let's decree that they're all are gonna be yellow, and then just see what happens.
Revolution would occur.
Yes, I'm sure. Thanks, James. That would be, that would be a great idea. Okay. Moving on to the second reading and adoption of policies. We have quite a list of them there. These are ones we covered. Have a motion on that, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on any of those policies? All right. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
If I could, I'd request that the next board agenda, that the PDF files for these particular items be included again, so for a quick review.
You don't have to go back.
Okay. Yeah. You could've gone back to last and looked at it.
Yeah, they were in there.
Bouncing back and forth between two different agendas is tough.
That's a good idea there. That's, that's a good idea. May I have a motion for the second reading and deletion of policy 6110-R?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? As we recall, it's being deleted because this information's already incorporated in the policies we just adopted. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Bring us the consent agenda. May I have a motion for action on the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on there? Any notes?
I have a question. Yeah. There are two temporary positions being voted on. One in human resources and one in the transportation, the two part-time secretary ones. My first question, when I first looked at it, I said they didn't have any term on any, any length of time. It's a six-month, three-month, two-month. I particularly hesitate to vote on temporary positions that have no end date and no general length of time to be used. My other question is. These are not new positions, correct? They're temporary positions. Can I understand, and I may have already been told this, but the cold weather has got my mind numbed quite a bit. What, just, what need is there that we get these two positions included now, since they weren't in the original budget?
So, is our, so I'm gonna address it as HR Director. Temporary positions are through civil service. They can never go more than 90 days. We had a Transportation Secretary to leave pretty quickly. And transportation, as you know, is particularly November, December, crazy time. So, that, that filled that role. We didn't wanna use a sub-clerk, sub, temporary sub-clerical. We wanted a higher level to help particularly George. Same for HR. We have.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
I have just one other question in reference to the budget transfer. Not a big item, but, you know, I know it's something we do every year, the Washington DC field trip. We had to make a transfer to cover. Were the, did those expenses come in higher or more students?
Yeah, yeah. We've been particularly paying attention to our growing rate of students who have financial difficulties. We're at a 46% poverty rate. And so, the list of students going on the Washington DC trip was shrinking. Washington DC trip was shrinking. And so, this year, what we did was we asked that if anybody needed financial assistance and met certain qualifications, they would, they would seek financial assistance, and this year, that was the amount that was short for students who indicated that they wanted to go, and in most of the cases, almost all of the cases, the families were able to say, we're able to, to spend this much, but we're short this much. So, this permitted any of the students who wanted to go on the Washington DC trip to go. One of the things that we are going to be looking at is our field trip policies and practices, because they're may not be in keeping with what our demographics are. So, we had money in the budget, Eric Shaw opened that up, and this was the amount that they were short.
Any sense as to how many families we helped?
I can check.
It'd be just curious today.
Yeah, I had it, I just don't have it here, so I don't want to quote a number, but he did give us the list and the amount for, that was requested.
Okay, great use.
Yeah, I, I just, I would like to say that, you know, if we're going to have an eighth grade trip to Washington DC, it's a true eighth grade trip to Washington DC and not dependent on...
Yep.
...family ability, we're not quite there yet. My, even my hunch is that there are still many, many students that don't go on the trip who don't want to ask for the money, and then it's not an eighth grade trip.
Maybe we can come up with a better vehicle for requesting those scholarships.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I did want to just point out on the personnel agenda, I believe, but I don't have it up in front of me, is Lisa's on there?
I got it.
Was that the last one? Okay, never mind.
No, okay, I didn't remember anything, but...
Okay, sorry.
All right. Okay, all in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Now, bring us to special education placements, may I have a motion for 11.1?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Dan?
I reviewed the pack and recommend this adoption. I have one question outstanding, but it shouldn't affect the actual adoption of the, it's a procedural thing that I would like to understand, and Aviva's already agreed to, will get the information for me.
Wonderful. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. This is my favorite one in the whole thing. You have a motion for 11.3, consultant agreement for a nice skate.
Well, we just kept...
Oh, first, oh, sorry. Sorry.
We skipped your other love and interest.
See, that's why, that's why we need a clerk, to keep me honest.
Keep you in line if not honest.
Or, yeah, yeah, in line, anyway. That's right, we did go through a whole lot of policies. You have a motion for first consideration of the policies listed in 11.2, please. You got a second?
Second.
All right, all, any discussion on that?
Yeah, quick question, Doug, I looked at a couple of them, one in particular, well, just one of them that I popped up, didn't have any deletions and didn't seem to have any identifiable additions.
Which one was that?
Which, yeah, do you remember which one?
I don't remember now.
The, when we, when we do that in general, it means that we've reviewed it and it needed no change, but we still re-adapt it because we, the only change that is made to the policy is the date that it was reviewed.
All right, that's fine.
So, that's, I'm not sure which one that might be, but that's probably the explanation.
But if you can put a notation on those in the future, then I won't be straining my eyes looking for a dot or a question mark.
Okay, all right. So, all in favor? All in favor, yeah? Oppose? All right. Now, we're to my favorite one for this, because I thought this was a test on, to see whether anybody actually read it.
You can read it and not understand it.
Yeah. Can I have a motion for 11.3, consultant agreement for a nice skate?
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The discussion, in my point of view, was this, it was a contract that was executed in August, and to, I wondered why it was there, and I called, I conversed with Linda, and it was because they never actually sent to sign agreement, and so we never paid them, right? So, unless...
It was professional development for the Nice Gate Conference, so I don't, I think it was just a misunderstanding, like, the technology department didn't feel we needed one, because we normally don't have one for, always for professional development, and when the invoice came in, the claims auditor asked for the contract.
Okay, so...
Well, that's interesting, because my question was, what's the dollar amount?
It's, I don't have the, I don't have the invoice with me, but it was $99 for each one of our employees that attended.
Okay.
Yeah, I just assumed it was 99 because it set up the, didn't it? Isn't there somewhere in there?
Didn't tickle a bell on, huh?
Yeah, all right. Or maybe I just imagined it, or maybe it's something Linda told me, but, all right. So, anyway, that's why it's here.
Don't let them know we imagine things, please.
We didn't vote on that, right?
No.
All in favor?
I think we need a first and second.
Yeah, we had a first, didn't we have a first and second?
Yes, we did, I'm still sorry.
Yeah, yeah. And anybody opposed? No? Okay, great. Okay, that brings us to 11.4, the corrective action plan for the external audit, which is listed in the...
Okay.
May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? That was at one of the previous meetings discussed. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. May I have a motion for 11.5, changed rate of pay for various positions as listed in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose?
I don't know if you can see it, but all these rates of pay, we're bringing them up to the minimum wage...
Minimum wage, right.
For this year, at 970.
And I have a motion for 11.6, inter-municipal agreement with the town of Hyde Park Police for events.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Have a motion for 11.7, classification of proposed reconstruction project as type two SECR action as listed in the agenda.
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? And oppose? Thank you. And can I have a motion for 11.8, classification of proposed district-wide capital improvement project as type two SECR actions, please, as listed in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Well, that brings us back to public participation, second time. May I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. If anybody wants to speak to us again? It's not futile.
Oh, we got a raised, we got a raised hand there.
It's not a futile exercise, you can talk to us, we listen. All right, may I have a motion to close?
No, no, no.
Oh, we're getting a selfie here.
Oh, wow.
Good evening, Steve Hughes, district resident. I didn't have a need to speak at the first public session because Ms. Kane, Ms. Kane conveyed my thoughts eloquently. However, there are a couple of points that came up during your discussion afterwards. The first is, and I know most of you understand this, but nondiscrimination means you don't treat people differently, so therefore, with regard to sports, you can't consider the fact that a student was born with a different sex than they currently are when considering them for participation in a team. However, the same rules apply to skills and abilities as apply to any other student. The other couple of points are just on terminology. When you, when you have to refer to a transgender person, you refer to them as transgender and the gender that they are now. So, a woman that became a man would be a transgender male, and a man that became a woman would be a transgender female, and the act of changing from one gender to another is called transitioning. So, just for your edification. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Now, may I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose?
I would just say thanks to Steve, I think that this is something that I know for myself I need education on.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate, because I know I stumbled several times during my conversation.
And if anybody would like to take and put together an over, you know, just, just a, you know...
Tutorial?
A tutorial or, you know, for dummies, I'd sit in on it. I mean, I think it's an important element, and I think that we could, I could use more education.
All right, any other comments? Again, thanks, Steve. Brings us to other matters deemed necessary by the board, I don't believe there are any. Moving on to, unless somebody else has something that I don't know about? No? Okay.
We keep you informed, Doug.
Thank you. Board subcommittee reports, any, you know, we hadn't really had enough time to do other than the School Board Association, they had a meeting.
Yeah, we did have the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting, of which, I'm not going to remember his name, but local attorney does not represent...
Sure, sure.
Shaw, yes. Came in and did, our January, January meeting is always, he comes in and updates us in all of what he knows and sees about negotiations, contract negotiations.
Okay. Always informative, it's always informative, it's like, it's nice to know what other districts are doing.
Yeah, gives you a little benchmark and, you know, and some ideas of, of things that we may want to consider as part of our negotiations.
Okay.
And the district leadership team met, and we opened up the afternoon to, you know, the extended committee, we did the instructional team in the morning and looked at our professional development plan, and in the afternoon, we replicated what was done in the evening on December 14th, and we had many of our community members join us and two of our students.
Great. Okay, it brings us to upcoming meetings. January 13th, tomorrow, is a superintendent's conference day with early release. January 16th, no school, Martin Luther King Junior Day. January 18th, North Park Elementary Winter Concert. And January 26th is the next Board of Education meeting, which will be held at 7:00 at the district office.
And that is a change in location from the calendar.
Oh, right, right.
We won't be, we won't be at Netherwood until later this year, Jillian's only had about six, seven weeks, so we'll visit Netherwood later on in the year. So, if you look at any of the published calendars, they say Netherwood, but we will be at district office next week, and we'll try and get the word out as much as possible for the audience that follows us.
Is that the meeting that will get the presentation we would have got tonight, please?
Yes, and the Ralph R. Smith presentation that was supposed to be tonight will be done at district office on the 26th.
Okay. I believe there's no need for another executive session unless Perry wants to go stand, sit in a room somewhere, or, okay. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Anybody opposed? All right. We are done.